Moving on to the Resource Committee. I know there was a meeting recently, we can move on for the moment. Policy Committee?
We have a meeting on Tuesday, October 6th at 5:00. At Selcuk.
Great. Student Support?
We have a meeting planned for the first School Committee meeting in October, which I believe is the fifth.
Number five.
Yes. So, we're gathering items for our agenda. Student Support covers everything from curriculum to student life, to the arts, to sports. So, parents are very welcome. That is a 5:30 meeting. We adjourn just before School Committee.
And School Personnel, we are actively negotiating with unions and setting up dates this fall. And back to the Resource Committee.
Resource Committee. We just met on 9/16, and we had a long meeting. I'll touch some of the things we spoke about. Our agenda was net school spending, strategic planning, strategic facilities use plan update, tentative facility and technology updates, Memorial Middle School auditorium. We discussed how to use the additional money if we received it, funding from the city when it comes. One of the things we did talk about was we recommended we hire two teachers for FHS and two aides at FHS. We also talked about an increase in the subpay. That's kind of where we come. That, uh, Carissa?
And last but not least, our student representative?
Hello, everyone. How is everyone?
Fantastic.
Good to hear. Welcome back. I want to start off by saying that something that I noticed right away was that Fitchburg High School, for whatever reason, it could just be that I'm a senior, and that the senior class tends to come together, but the school feels more cohesive, and it feels like we're really trying to start off on a positive note, which I really appreciate, partly due definitely to the efforts of the faculty, but I think that the students themselves really want this year to be a good year. It's going to be challenging, because I know the new schedule, it takes a little bit of getting used to, if you're in an AP class, it's a little bit of crunch time, but, I mean, I've seen the students rising up to the challenge, and I think that that's really worth mentioning. As far as list items go, a club that is really starting to pick up is called Best Buddies, and it's a partnership between the students of the high school and the special needs students, and they basically have a lot of opportunities. I think they have an event that's coming up this Friday, where they do a lot of games, they have gardens, and everything that they take care of together, which is really empowering to see that picking up within the student body, and everybody really stepping up to help these students feel a part of the high school. As far as sports go, always very exciting. We had our football game recently, and very, very big turnout from the student body. They had, it was called Bright Out, so if you were part of FHS, you had to show up in really bright, like, highlighter colors, and it was a really big turnout from that, and it looked really cool, also. That was about it that I had on my list, but I definitely did want to stress that first point, is that we're really starting out positively, and I think that that's just a wonderful way to start out the year. Thank you.
Speaking of AP, it was a great AP assembly that we had the other day.
Oh, yeah.
Most we've ever had, so it's great to see everyone taking courses. Okay, moving on to the approval of the meeting minutes of June 29th. This is our retreat. Any amendments, corrections? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting minutes are passed, and then our regular School Committee meeting on June 15th.
Motion acceptable.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any corrections on this one? Okay, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. There is no executive session this time, so we're going to move on to new business. As you know, we have the annual MAS, CMASS joint conference, November 4th through 7th, so we're looking for nominations for a delegate and a alternate delegate.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Pete Stevens as our delegate.
Motion's been made in second to nominate Mr. Pete Stevens. Any other nominations for delegate?
We need an alternate also.
We do.
Yep. I'll nominate Sally Gregan for alternate.
I accept.
Any other nominations for alternate? Okay, so that makes the vote later on pretty easy. Okay, moving on to any, any business or communications.
Sure, I have a quick one, which is last Thursday, I'd like to thank Principal Jeremy Roche and so many wonderful teachers at Fitchburg High School. Twin City Paws brought three animals. We brought three therapy pets to the high school during the four lunch blocks, and we visited with many, many, many kids, dozens of kids, pretty much. We had hand sanitizer, we had a wonderful bulldog, we had two therapy cats, one who's in training, and one, the other one is Wendell Cat, my cat. But we talked to a lot of kids about what they can do when they see stray cats in Fitchburg, what they can do if they find a stray dog. So, we put a notice up at the high school, we'll be there again in two weeks. Come by and say hi next time, Lizzie. I know you guys are super, the seniors are so busy during lunch, I saw a few friends just like flying by, but it was a really unique opportunity, and I think a lot of kids appreciated it. There seemed to be, we got a lot of freshmen who were new, it was only their 10th day in high school, so to sit down and kind of, you know, hear what freshmen have to say, and everyone was very positive about the school, but I think people really appreciated just visiting with an animal and just getting a little bit of quiet time. So, I want to thank Mr. Roche and Fitchburg High School for making that possible. We'll be back in two weeks.
One thing, on, there was some boss, but talked a little bit about, sent us an email tonight on something was being done with alternative energy, and being the political season, you know, they talked about we should be doing more with political, with alternative energy. And over the last several years, we have been doing an awful lot with alternative energy. We're looking at putting solar panels on the roofs of some of the schools, and we've gone way back six, five, six, seven years now, that we investigated geothermal energy. You know, we put, we've switched from oil to gas, and we've been doing an awful lot with alternative energy, and Bob, Lotta, you sent an email?
Yeah, we, briefly, we were approved for a feasibility grant for the Memorial Roof in the Department of Environmental Resources. The design has been completed stating that the roof could support a solar array in certain parts, so basically now the next steps are to work with our city purchasing, and also with our utility, Unitil, to make sure that they have enough cap space for us to do net metering. That's really one of the biggest roadblocks at this point, is if, is there enough capacity available for us to put a solar array on the roof, and then sell back the excess power to the utility.
I'd just like to put out there to the general public that the School Committee has been and will continue to work on alternative energy. Thank you.
I also wanted to say thank you for everybody that was involved with making the Education Commissioner's trip to Fitchburg a very productive and great one, and we had some great press in the Sentinel and Enterprise, which was very nice. He had some very kind words to say about partnerships that exist in our community. There are no more communications. We're going to have a public comment period from anybody who's in the audience. Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mary. Well, we're off to start the year, anywhere you finish the year, and that is with student presentations and staff, really to kind of highlight some of the things that are happening with our students and staff in the Fitchburg schools. This happened in the summertime, which today would be the last day of officially labeling the world summertime, at least in this part of the world. It seems like a lot longer ago than that, but there were some fantastic things. I sent you pictures of some of the stuff, and things were posted on FPS First, but Sue is here tonight, Sue Turegney, who you've seen before, and she's here with students Autumn Hill, Danny Sanchez, and Emily Campbell, and has a PowerPoint presentation for you. We have a new FATV student, Julia, so I've gone over some things, and when we do a PowerPoint presentation, Julia, it's switch number one, we'll shut off this bank of lights. So, hopefully that will happen.
My presentation is pretty much, because it's in a movie mega format, but we're not too compatible with the student program, which is okay, but I have lots of beautiful young students here to talk about our program in the end. So, I'm Sue Turegney, I've been involved with Camp Sun for three years now, and it is a, it's an extension of the 21st Century After School Program. Part of our hours are required that we do a summer program. So, if I talked about successes this summer, we had 85 students attend, which is a great success. We were able to incorporate some special education teachers this year and staff, which brought on additional students that have those needs and supports. We had, I guess, our best success, I could tell you about our quality program that we have. We have amazing teachers. We were able to offer a young scientist class where the kids were, had hands-on lab reports that they were doing. This is for students in grades two to eight. We had a STEM program, and I'll have a student talk to you a little bit about that. A Glee, we had something for everybody. All we saw all summer long were these bright smiling faces every day, they couldn't wait to come in, see what was going on. It was new and different and exciting, small class sizes, one to 10, one to 12 ratio. We had an awesome facility to use, because we were at Crocker Elementary School, it abuts the trails in the back, and one of the projects that Kim Belio did was to actually go out, mark the trails, so that they can be used by the teachers during the school year. So, all of the trails are labeled. In addition, she put together a nature trail study guide, and as you enter the trails, there's a mailbox, and you can take the little guide out, and you can go along the trails, and it identifies trees and plants, and it's very educational and informative, and her students actually created that document. I have a booklet that I'll pass around to. We also had a quilting project, and I have some students that'll talk about that, which was amazing. Mrs. Renaud actually tied in the history of quilting through some literacy programs, but she actually had the students make their own quilts, and then they also made a quilt that they donated to the Linus Project. Students will talk about that as well. But all I can say is that it was just an amazing summer, it was four quick weeks. We were always happy to arrive and always sad to leave, but we cram in, it's four weeks, it's basically 16 days, two hours a day, but the amount of learning and the amount of just hands-on stuff that takes place in that four weeks, I, I'm very proud of our program. I think it's a very successful program, and it's because of the teachers that we have in the program, and all the wonderful students that attend. So, I'd like to introduce Danny. Danny was involved in two classes, he did the quilting class, and he also did the STEM These are some of the projects that they got to do, and just part of their STEM.
Maybe if we could slide the mic a little bit this way, in his direction, that'll be great.
So, why don't you introduce yourself? Tell them what school you're at now, okay?
I'm just going to pass, this is, keep the trail diagram.
Hello. My name is Danny Sanchez, and I'm now going to Memorial. I'm in 5th grade right now, and I've made a battery-powered car, a Styrofoam airplane, a solar-powered car, and a catapult.
So, when Mr. Stevens says we're looking at alternative fuels, it starts with you, with your solar-powered car. That's right. Can you tell us a little bit about each of those?
Okay.
Pretend you're talking to one of your buddies in the hallway in 5th grade.
Well, in my solar-powered car, it absorbs the energy from the sun, and it goes into the generator with the axle, the gear, which turns the wheel so it can move forward.
It actually was going forward as I was carrying it out to my car this afternoon. All of a sudden, it was just taking off.
Does it go pretty fast, or is it, how does it?
It depends on how much sunlight there is. And in the battery-powered car, this button here powers the battery, a nine-volt battery, connected to another generator, with a gear connected to a rubber band to move this wheel so it can go forward.
Now, is that one connected now? Could that one work now?
I think so, if the batteries aren't dead.
Where's my on switch?
Right here.
Want to try it?
Hey, very nice.
So, from scratch, pieces, all these different pieces, you put all the pieces together to make that?
Yes.
Great.
Danny, were you following a plan? Were you guys kind of working stuff out? How did, how did you put it together?
All you needed was this piece of wood, and then you had to tape a, you had to get a straw, and put an axle, an axle in between, and then put the washers and the wheels, but on the back you put a gear. And then you have to put these on, and you got to connect these wires by twisting the inside together, connecting it to the generator, and connecting one wire to this. And when you turn on the power, it allows the car, the rubber band will move, and then the car will start moving forward.
Great.
All of the items that they created, they then took out and tested. So, they would go into the parking lot, and even the catapults, they would try different variables. So, they may use M&amp;M's or beans or something like that, see which could launch the furthest, and one of the first days that they assembled the cars, they put them up on the window, so, and as soon as the sun hit, the [inaudible]. And then they learned about, they learned about flight as well, which was interesting, because not only do they create the planes, but they learned about lift, and all the different adjustments, what'll happen if we weight the tip, what'll happen if we do this, what, you know, so they played around with the variables, and it was, it was, Mr. Widmore is a 8th grade science teacher here at Memorial, and he taught the class the summer for us. Okay, Danny's second class is something that I'm very proud of, there was a quilting class that was awesome. He was a nice, star sewer in that class, he just took to that sewing machine, and he created this beautiful quilt.
Nice.
Really nice.
Wow.
Very nice.
What a creative summer, Danny.
Yeah.
Don't allow weapons in the schools, but the catapult is. Yeah, what a waste of a good M&amp;M. Yeah, I know, Mr. Stevens would be the target for M&amp;M's, for sure.
So, the structure of the camp, too, is when the students come in, they have two hours, I'm sorry, they have two one-hour blocks, and it's a choice, they can choose which activities they feel they may want to participate in. Once they choose, they're locked in groups for weeks. So, Danny was in Engineering Program every day for four weeks for his first block, his second block was his quilting. Okay, we're going to have Autumn talk to you a little bit about her two blocks, and then we can finish with Emily, who will give you some more information about the Linus
Hi.
Hi.
I know you have that Glee voice, right?
I'm Autumn Hill, and last summer in Camp Sun, I had two blocks, one of my blocks was the quilting with Miss Renaud. I made this quilt, and my second block was Glee with Miss Collins, and my third block, well, we got to choose what block we have for our third block, and my third block I chose, well, just dance with Miss Collins. We got to do a bunch of dancing, and freeze dance, and games like that.
So, again, Autumn was a performer, she liked Glee, so we were able to meet that need. Like I said, we had such a variety of activities offered for the students that we were able to find something for everybody. Okay, good job, Autumn. Any questions for Autumn?
What was your favorite Glee song?
Well, we got to do two songs, because she had two classes that did two different songs, but one song we did all together, and it was the Cup Song from Kendrick.
Very nice.
So, they performed the last day of our program, we have a parent activity, so, a parent day, so the parents came in, and they had the opportunity to see the students. They actually went out on the hiking trail.
How fun.
And then we had a pizza, and while the parents were eating, the Glee students performed these abilities. And our last presenter from Camp Sun is Emily Campbell.
That was Danny Sanchez and Autumn Hill. And now we have Emily Campbell.
Hi. So, first, I also was in the Glee group. I was in the first period while Autumn was in the second period, and my group did the Best Day of My Life by American Authors, and that was really fun. And then second period was quilting, and I'm a, yes?
Very nice.
And the, I was very excited when I was told we would be working with the Linus Program, because when I was born, me and my sister were in the NICU, so we got a blanket from Project Linus, and then my sister had leukemia, so she got a couple of Project Linus blankets while she was having chemotherapy, mom? Yeah, chemotherapy. And so, I looked online, and I found the story of how it started. It was about the Karen Lewix, I think, she decided to provide homemade security blankets once she heard about a story in Parade Magazine about a little girl named Laura who had leukemia, and she got a, she had a special blankie that helped her through the chemotherapy. And then it says, and then I also found their mission, and they want to provide love, a sense of security, warmth and comfort to children who are seriously ill, traumatized, or otherwise need, in need of the gifts through new handmade blankets and afghans, lovingly created by volunteer Blanketeers.
A lot of the projects that the students worked on were what we call service learning projects, or project-based, and this one happened to be both. So, they learned about quilting, they researched quilting and how it affected our history, but then we turned it into a service learning project, because they learned about the Linus Project, and then created the quilts, and they donated two quilts to the Linus Project, and then wrote letters to go with the quilts. So, it all just came together. Good job.
I'm in 7th grade at McKay Arts Academy.
Did a very nice job presenting.
How many students participated in the whole program this summer?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five.
Yes, yes.
And how many different areas did you offer courses in?
Meaning, subject area?
Yeah, subject area, yeah.
We had eight different courses, so we had Glee, Young Scientist, Engineering, which we called STEM. We had Kim's program, Kim Belio did the trail. I had a, what would normally be a PE class, but we called it Adventure Games, which was amazing, because the students actually were giving group problem-solving initiatives, and had to solve them, and do fitness as well. So, that was a whole different component, teaching about social skills and getting along and working together. We offered another great art program, we called it Mystical Gardens, but we had found a woman in Fitchburg named Judy Murray, who is a licensed, licensed portocultural therapist, and she came in and taught the kids how to make fairy houses. And then when the parents went out on the trails to hike, the fairy houses were set up along the trails, so as part of that, that hike, they got to see the kids' artwork as well, which is pretty incredible. Trying to figure out how to provide, oh, we have a farm garden, a garden-to-table program, so it's like the garden and cook, they run it, both nutrition and [inaudible]. Yeah, so we had a really, like I said, the program in the summer was just amazing. Yeah, it was, I mean, I would put up against any camp in the area.
There are photos of some of the fairy houses on FPS First on the website, the pictures there.
And just to be clear, the program itself went for four hours, included breakfast, lunch, and transportation, and the, the other two hours, two hours were kind of established for the four weeks. The other two hours were more flexible, so that students, if they didn't get into one of their primary choices for the two-hour blocks, had an opportunity to still participate in choice-directed activities for the other two, just shorter stints.
At the end of each, at the end of each day, we called, we had what was called a mix-it-up program. So, we would have, like, three science teachers go out. One of the days, we did water balloon launching, and it was, it was, honestly, it was the coolest thing ever, I thought, until I got the package in the mail, and it said, "Not for, not for children, not for children, not for children." So, the adults were launching the water balloons, and the kids were up on the hill predicting how far they thought they would go. So, we turned, you know, what was supposed to be a fun activity into a safe activity, but we turned it into a science lesson as well, because we had the cones marking off every 10 yards, and, you know, Mr. Puma, one of our science teachers, would pull back, you know, he, he yelled out a launch angle, and the kids would take their little clipboards and write down where they, how far they thought it would go, and then we'd release it, and they, they were flying, yeah, like, hundreds of yards, these water balloons, so it was pretty, pretty interesting. But kids could choose, if they didn't get to do a physical activity, they could do it that last half hour. If they wanted to go down into the art room, the, the art teacher offered something, and we had to, had the kids rotate around and try a lot of different things. Because sometimes a student might say, "Oh, that quilt is really neat, I didn't get a chance to make a quilt." Well, Mrs. Renaud offered pillow making in that short block, so some kids had the opportunity to make pillows. So, we tried to-
How were the kids selected, so?
For the camp?
Yeah.
It's an enrollment process, so they, we put the information out to all the schools, and we asked students to get their applications in. Because Long Joe and Crocker run programs for 21st Century, we open it up to them first, and then we wait about two weeks, and then we open it up to everybody. We had 85 students enrolled, and almost every single one of them paid something to attend. It's usually a, I forget if it's a hundred-dollar fee, but most of the students were able to pay, and those that couldn't, we didn't turn them away, but even parents that had difficulties, we just gave them a discounted rate, but we, we took in some money as well, so it was good.
So, are you also doing it if you look to play?
I am, but I'm, I just need to put Kate in slideshow up, and I'm not- And I'm not sure how to get out of this.
No, I can get it out.
If you don't mind.
So last, I'm going to introduce Kayden.
Last summer, at the last meeting, we had Kayden come to you. And she had just been selected as the Student Ambassador for the state of Massachusetts. And we were talking about our trip that we were going to be taking to Chicago. And we have since been to Chicago. And I want Kayden to share that, yeah, that's it, that trip with you. And I just put together a few slides just so as she's talking. We can just throw a few slides up. Because we met some pretty interesting people.
She has her T-shirt on. Nice job.
This is for you. I'm done talking.
No, you can talk.
So this summer, as the Massachusetts State Representative for Feel Up to Play Sixty, I attended the Student Ambassador Summit in Chicago, Illinois. It was my first time on a plane and it was also my first time away from home for more than one night. I stayed in Chicago for three nights and four days. While there, I met many new friends from other states, including my roommate Ariann, who is from Columbus, Ohio. I participated in many group activities, including the dance-off. I had the opportunity to listen to many guest speakers, including Chef Remy from Sodexo. I also met Sam Acho and Jordan Mills, two professional football players from the Chicago Bears, and got to play flag football with them. If I had to tell you one lesson I learned at the summit, it's that the Dairy Council and Feel Up to Play Sixty work extremely hard to promote healthy living across the entire country. Also, in August, I was invited along with Mrs. Turgny and my dad to the Patriots Training Camp at Gillette Stadium. During our visit, we met and got autographs from several Patriot players and cheerleaders. We listened to a former player, John Smith, who was the guest speaker for the event. And we were very excited to sit on the sidelines during an actual Patriot football practice. Also in August, I was invited to a town hall event held at Tufts University. The topic I spoke about was why does health and wellness really matter? For this discussion, I was able to speak briefly about health and wellness and the importance of physical, mental, social, environmental, spiritual, and emotional health in people's lives. Following the town hall event, I was asked to participate in an interview along with another student from Memorial, Dylan Arugio. I have many future plans as the 2015 through 2016 Student Ambassador. On Tuesday, September 29th, my dad and I will travel to Rhode Island for a publicity shoot with Patriot Safety Devon McCordy. Also, throughout our school year, I would like to help begin the Farm-to-School Program, the 100 Mile Club, and also help to plan a Feel Up to Play Sixty school dance-off. I plan to work closely with Mrs. Turgny and Jill Lucius to promote fitness and wellness throughout our entire district. Thank you.
You can check out Kayden. She's appearing on feeluptoplay60.com and also the New England Dairy webpages.
That's great.
So if you go to the website, you'll see her. And like I said, she said she's going to Rhode Island for a private photo shoot with Devon McCordy.
Wow.
Thank you.
Well, Elizabeth, you can see, you'll have nothing to worry about. As you move out, there are people coming. There are people in the pipeline, so Pittsburgh High School, watch out.
Sue, I just have to tell you that I was at a barbecue this summer and I guess the New Hampshire state rep was at the barbecue. She was talking about Feel Up to Play Sixty. I said, "Oh, yeah, we know about Feel Up to Play Sixty." And she started showing us her phone and she said, "Wait a minute." Because my daughter was there and she was saying, "Yeah, well, I know the Massachusetts rep." And the girl said, "Wait a minute, is that teacher? She's from your school?" And so she had a picture of you, Sue. And she said, "This lady's the best." So I just thought you should know that.
Is that Fitzwilliams, New Hampshire, or Milford?
Milford, New Hampshire.
Yeah, yeah. As a matter of fact, we're hoping to, we flew with them from Chicago. We met them at the airport that morning at like five thirty. And flew up there with them. And we ended up hanging out with them a lot while we were there. So we're hoping to even visit, like do some type of a sharing at schools. Where they go up and see their school and what they're doing with their Fuel Up and maybe invite them to come here.
Congratulations, Kayden.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to hear it when it was starting and then have you come back and report out on it in Chicago. Wow, that's what an opportunity. Thank you so much. Thanks, Sue.
Thank you.
I do have Kayden's speech with me that she presented at the town hall. And I'll just pass that out as well.
Before you guys go, Kayden and Mrs. Turgny. So what about kids that just, you know, they're not into the whole healthy food thing? I mean, what kind of, you know, persuasion? Or, you know, you can say, "Try this or that." But, you know, what are some of the strategies? What are some of the kind of, you know, how do we get kids to eat healthy? Because I have my house divided. I have one child who does and one child who does not, so. What are they talking about in the Fuel Up to Play world?
Well, we were talking about definitely having students like advertise different programs and healthy eating. Because like, if someone's friends are doing it, they'll probably want to join in rather than if it's the staff just talking.
We try to do taste tests too. I don't know, and we do them here at school. Jill and Dave are great about, and Hillary, they're great about trying new things on the menu. And we'll try to do that with them as well. We'll work with them. I have a fitness club and it's a lot of students that want to promote fitness and wellness. I call it my fitness club, but they're really student ambassadors through Fuel Up to Play Sixty. So they're trying to get that message out.
That's really great because, I mean, not to take you away from your schooling at all, but for every kid in every school to know you and your name and what you're doing, what you stand for. I mean, the more we can cross-pollinate at the school-by-school level, you know, even if there was one of those tastings and you came as a special guest ambassador. I don't know, obviously this means some driving and schlepping and all that stuff. But, you know, you've really taken to this, it seems. And it seems like a wonderful fit. And I just feel like a lot of kids can benefit from the wisdom you're getting from this experience. So just food for thought, so to speak.
All this responsibility at such a young age.
This is one of the messages that she was saying, that she wants to work with Jill and she wants to help promote district-wide. So that may be something that we can do is maybe during her lunch block, is visit another school during their lunch block and try to do some of that communicating and, you know, having her run a taste test maybe. You know, to learn some cool things from Chef Remy, which was, that was amazing to me.
All right, I'm writing myself a note, so Jill, I'll email you tomorrow. Just to put this on the agenda. No, I'm happy, I'm happy to come and help out. I mean, in support or promote. Lunchtime is good. I have a good schedule for then. But I just feel like, you know, there's a lot of magic you can do in the schools. Because you're a kid. And I think kids would really respect that, so.
I'd like to have Kayden in a group, like the fitness club. You know, maybe do some like community service kind of things and visit some of the other schools and help to promote the message. There are Fuel Up, there are Fuel Up activities going on in some of the schools. Not all of them, but we're getting there.
Right.
And it'd be nice for this middle school level to be the leaders and like I said, the ambassadors. And maybe once the elementary school students see what they're doing and how they can become leaders themselves in their own schools. That's something we're trying to promote.
Great. And how long are you the representative?
All year.
Okay, so you're, this is your year?
Yeah.
September to...
Started with Chicago.
Okay.
Yes.
Excellent.
All right, well, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Great job from all of you. So we're just going to change the order of the agenda just a little bit because there's a natural progression here from Fuel Up and what you just heard from Kayden and the piece from Jill Lucius and Dave Semenza on our nutrition services. So since that makes sense, let's put those together. So if you guys will come up. Give you a little bit of the origin of this, even though a lot of this information has been out there. Every, the beginning of every year, we have a meeting with the Sodexo staff. And we kind of look at, okay, what have we done during the year? And where do we want to go? And what do we want to do? And it was really clear in the conversations that were going on how many things that we were doing. So part of what came out of that conversation, you know, my thought was, I don't think we have this all in one place. We presented here and there and whatever. You know, could we do something where it all gets together and it's all in one place about the things that are going on in the Pittsburgh Public Schools regarding nutrition? And Hillary and Jill and Dave have worked on this, which can easily be, you know, transported to the website, put on FPS First and sent home and used in a lot of different ways. So it's a fantastic job. And it's very clear and it just summarizes everything going on. So take it away and talk about what you're doing in this publication.
Good evening. First, I want to know if anybody recognizes that top banana there? Told you.
I don't recognize that.
No, no. So that was our banana mascot at one of our Parks Day events this summer. So, go ahead. So we're going to do this in a "Did You Know" format. So as you all know, we did community eligibility program last year, which allows all of our students to have breakfast and lunch at no charge. We are continuing that this year. And because of some of the increases we made to our percentages, we actually are starting a new four-year cycle this year. So we'll have the community eligibility available for four more years. So our meals are analyzed to make sure that they meet all of the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act and all other federal regulations. It's always been our goal to provide our students with the healthiest meals that they enjoy.
All right, so Did You Know What a Meal Includes? Every student gets an opportunity to grab a lean protein component. They get a whole grain component. They also have the opportunity to pick one full cup of fruits, one full cup of vegetables, and a choice of milk. So it actually adds up to a pretty substantial meal. They can grab lots of different kinds of foods, but not too much. We do have the regulations to follow. We have calorie ranges. The elementary calorie range is between 550 and 650 calories. The middle school is between 600 and 700 calories. And the high school is 750 to 850. So we do fit around that range, but still, it's a really good, substantial meal in the middle of the day. Speaking of the regulations, there are also certain vegetables that we must serve throughout the week. And they're based on the vegetable subgroups. All of the vegetable subgroups are organized by what vitamin and mineral that they contribute to the meal. So not only does it look really good in the presentation on the line, but it also benefits the student in so many different ways throughout the week. They get, excuse me, red-orange vegetables, at least three servings of those a week, which we go over. They have dark greens, which we have plenty of those throughout the week, almost every day. We have a starchy vegetable once a week, if not more, and legumes. The different schools do cold salads with beans and peas. And sometimes it's like baked beans, a hot side dish.
So we like to encourage all the students in the Pittsburgh Public Schools to participate in Nutrition Service Program, whether they're eating lunch at school or bringing a lunch from home. We do offer many side choices and a variety of milk. If a student is bringing a lunch from home, they certainly have the opportunity to go through the line and pick up a milk in the fruit and vegetable sides. And that actually is considered a reimbursable meal and we can give that to them also at no charge. We do, if parents are concerned about allergies, sometimes they want to send food from home. We do have a good system in place that alerts us to any allergies that any student in the district has. So it's just, you know, a comfort for the parents to know that we are paying attention to what the kids are eating when they're walking through our line.
That piece there, when it came out of our discussion, and I didn't even know that. And I thought, that's really something we need to educate parents to, that you could still be making a choice to send your child to school with a lunch, but then you could supplement that with fresh vegetable or fruit or milk or something like that. So we need to let people know that because they might not, they might think, "Well, I'm not part of the lunch program, so I can't do that." But you can.
So all of these things that, you know, these improvements and stuff we're making, what are some of the things that we're serving now? As many of you know, we are doing our best to transition towards menus that are more from scratch. And, you know, we looked at some hard numbers. Basically, we compared some menus from last September to the end of the school year. And I know, I know, Bob, you love when we can, we can give some hard numbers. And we came up with some hard numbers. Elementary school, at the beginning of the year, each day, on 52% of the school days, kids had a choice of a from-scratch item. By the end of the school year, it was up to 74% of the days. The high school, starting the school year, 71% of the items we offered were, had an option of a made-from-scratch item. By the end of the school year, 90%. So one out of every, nine out of every 10 days, a student at the high school coming into our cafeteria, there is at least one from-scratch item being offered. And the middle school went from 76% of the time to 95% of the time there is a from-scratch item available. And what are some of these items? Excuse me, when we're making, you know, we're making a roasted chicken drumstick, roasted pork with beans, turkey and gravy, a chicken piccata, rainbow chili, shepherd's pie, our spaghetti sauce we make from scratch. When we do Alfredo recipes, we are making our own from-scratch Alfredo sauce. Anytime we are serving mashed potatoes, they are real mashed potatoes. That we take potatoes, we boil or steam and mash them. Our tacos, anytime we do tacos or nachos, the seasoning we're using isn't a high-salt, from, you know, packaged taco seasoning. We have developed our own in-house low-sodium taco seasoning that we make at the schools. Oven-baked home fries, baked carrot fries. We make our own hummus for our hummus plates. We're also making several inroads in other areas. The day of the chicken nugget is gone. We now offer an unbreaded chicken dunker. Grilled chicken breasts, up at the high school restaurant-style salads, you know, grilled chicken Caesar, buffalo chicken salads. Just a lot of overall exciting food options that are only going to continue to transition towards that.
I can vouch for a lot of that food because there's a cafeteria in our building and it's a very convenient place to go. And quality is spectacular.
So there is a renewed interest in breakfast to ensure academic success. As you all know, a hungry kid doesn't learn. So while we feed about 77% of our students at lunch, we only feed about 38% at breakfast. So we would really like to encourage parents and students to participate and have their breakfast at school. We do offer breakfast programs at all of our schools free of charge. And Hillary's just going to talk a little bit about what's available during our breakfast programs.
So there's some flexibility with breakfast. Most of our breakfasts are made from a whole-grain main entree. But sometimes it can be protein, like our yogurt combo meals in the morning, or supplementing the breakfast with a cheese stick. So there's our protein. They have the opportunity to get a full cup of fruit or a vegetable, depending, and a milk. So there are plenty of things that they can get for breakfast, but still, we have to keep in with that calorie regulation. So an elementary breakfast can be between 300 and 500 calories. So it's still a pretty good meal to start your day off. Middle school, between 400 and 500 calories. And the high school, between 450 and 600 calories. So that's a pretty good meal to get you into the lunch later in the day.
So one of the ways that we try to increase our breakfast participation is by alternative programs. And both of our middle schools have a grab-and-go component where the students grab a breakfast as they're coming into the building and they get to eat it in their homeroom. At the high school level, we have a kiosk set up in one of the student lobbies. So the kids that don't want to make that walk down to the cafeteria can have a breakfast from the kiosk and either eat it then or take it into their room. We're also piloting a program at Rhinegold where the first grade is doing a grab-and-go breakfast and it's going very well. So we have a kiosk... So, we have a kiosk set up right in front of the first-grade wing and they get the breakfast and go into their classroom. It allows us to connect with that social aspect of eating together in the classroom while still taking all of the responsibility off the teachers. When they walk in, they're all set, the teachers don't have to worry about, did they take what they're supposed to take and did I check them off on the roster? So, the grab-and-go model works really well. We're hoping that we can move it forward in the elementary schools.
And also, one of our initiatives is to increase our wellness promotion program throughout the, beyond the cafeteria. Some ways that we're doing this is promoting the Sodexo My Monday program. And we've created nutrition facts and tips announcements for a lot of our elementary schools, starting in October, to read them in the morning or in the afternoon. And they're just little tips and facts with a question for the students to really think of, like, for example, it's, can you think of five fruits that are red? Or can you think of, you know, why we eat fruits and vegetables? Or how many glasses of milk or dairy items did you have yesterday? So, it helps them think about nutrition throughout the day. And it's even a teaching opportunity for the teachers if they really wanted it early in the morning. Another way is that we're supporting the Sodexo Mind, Buddy, and Soul program in the secondary schools. This is an information board that supports all the spectrums of wellness and how important it is to go through mind, body, and soul and really appreciating all of them. And lastly, we partner pretty well with Fuel Up Play 60. We do a lot to support that program. Oops, sorry.
Back to the banana.
She pulls it off really well.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Jill, the, at Rhinegold, second, third, and fourth grade can still go in for breakfast?
Yes. Actually, kindergarten is eating in their classrooms through, we transport the food to the kindergarten classroom. And first grade is doing the grab-and-go and second, third, and fourth is still eating in the cafeteria with the hope that we may move grab-and-go to some of the other classes, too.
It's almost back to where we used to bring the little carts to the classrooms.
Yeah, I mean, as you know, we did breakfast in the classroom for many years. The grab-and-go is a little bit of a twist because what it does is it takes a lot of that responsibility off the teacher, but still gives them that way to interact and have breakfast all together in the classroom.
Do the kids, especially at the high school and junior high level, do they have an opportunity to get a second lunch, seeing the ones that are like in sports and?
They do have the opportunity to buy a second lunch, but they have to purchase it. We're not allowed to count more than one lunch for a reimbursable lunch. We are offering a dinner program at the high school currently. We will begin to offer it at any school that has an after-school program when those start up, usually the first or second week of October. The high school, most of the kids that participate in the dinner program are athletes. When the football players are in season, they really enjoy it. So, they can, once they get done class, we actually do dinner there at 10 past 2:00. So, they can actually go grab a dinner. We do a cold sandwich or salad. It comes with fruit and vegetable and milk. And they get to grab that, have that before they actually head over to the field for practice.
Is that a grab-and-go?
It is a grab-and-go, yeah. Yeah.
I guess my question's for the younger kids and kindergarten bringing the breakfast in. I mean, I felt like there was a time where my daughter was having breakfast at home and then would go to school and say, no, no, I gotta eat this.
Yeah, we don't force anybody to eat. And, you know, you're always going to have that issue. There's going to be kids that are eating at home and then maybe shouldn't be having a second breakfast. But unfortunately, we do have a lot of students in this district that don't have the opportunity to eat at home.
Is that a conversation in the class?
Um, you know what? I really couldn't tell you if it's a conversation in the classroom. I know the kids that come through the cafeteria line said, go up and get breakfast if you want. The other thing we give them the opportunity to do is even though they have to take a specific number of items, most of the elementary schools have a little cooler that they keep, that they call the share cooler. It stays right in the line so that we can monitor allergies. But like, if a kid really only wants juice, we can't give them just the juice, but we can encourage them to take some other items, they throw them into the cooler. There may be another student that wants two bowls of cereal and they just go back and forth and get it. So, it works out. It's difficult with breakfast because the starting times are so different. And I know from my kids, elementary kids want to eat as soon as they put their feet on the ground. Secondary kids don't want to eat till 10 o'clock.
Right.
So, it's difficult to figure out what the best time is.
Before we end that, I'd like Kathy to come up. Kathy, can you come up? Just because we want to acknowledge you. Kathy is probably a familiar face to those of you who've been around for a while. What's your official title, Kathy?
District manager.
District manager. So, Kathy is and soon will be, was the district manager. Kathy, I know she looks like she's 25. She's going to be retiring.
Oh.
And has worked in food service for 38 years? For 38 years? And worked for Sodexo for 17, 18?
38 years.
Oh, for 38 years.
Wow.
So, all 38 years with Sodexo. And you've seen her here before. She's just been great to work with. She understands, you know, our needs. She works great with her staff. She's been wonderful, you know, with us and in some cases needing patience, you know, with us as we work through this stuff. But I think we couldn't do what we're doing with that staff with ourselves if we didn't have, you know, a representative from Sodexo who really got it, who understood, you know, what our goals are and what we're trying to do. So, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for the years that you've been working with us and just, you know, you just bring a, like a, I don't know, a nice personality to it and you're easy to work with. Bob and I were talking about that tonight. So, we appreciate that and we appreciate the support that you give these folks because they're able to make the kind of changes that we see here because it's supported back at the home office. And Kathy is the person who's done that. So, thank you for your work.
It's been a pleasure working with all of you. And, you know, I wouldn't have such a night, you know, I'm so easy to work with because they make my job very easy by doing the things that they do. So, it's been a great relationship and I know that it will continue and I hope to see you all at some point in the future.
Good. And best of luck in your retirement. We're all envious.
I will. I'm going to enjoy.
You mentioned guest server.
Oh, yes. Yes. National School Lunch Week is coming up the week of October 13th. And if you haven't already been contacted to be a guest server, I know certain people have already been lined up. We always try to do that at least once a year. The kids really like it when they see somebody different behind the service line. And so, I know that you're already set up.
McKay's after me again.
And where are you going, Pete?
Longs Joe.
Longs Joe, yeah.
And I'm sure I'm going to, I'll probably go to McKay and also Rhinegold.
Yes. It's a week, is that on the Thursday?
I think that's on Wednesday.
Wednesday?
That's the 14th.
So, the 14th.
I could spread out.
And certainly, if you want to, you can reach out to any school that you want. I know some of the managers have already invited people, so McKay would be a perfect spot for you two to jump down the, and you get a free meal out of it. Oh, my goodness.
And a free hairnet.
And a free hairnet and gloves and, you know, we'll take your picture and then it will be on the first slide next year.
You can choose a hat if you don't want to wear the hairnet.
And you can borrow my banana costume.
There you go. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We have a carrot one, too, if you want to wear that.
There's only one top banana.
Oh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate it. We're a little out of order, but follow me, follow, stand with me. We have a new employee as of this summer and I thought it was really important. You know, we've had a curriculum math director for the past couple of years and we have a new one, Wendy Abrahamson, and she's working in our central office. Wendy, come on up and I'm going to let Paula do the formal introduction.
Okay. So, it's a pleasure to have Wendy join our team. She comes to us, having worked for several years in the Gil Montague School District, pre-K to 12, as a math coach and math curriculum director. She was a key team member in raising, at one point, the Gil Montague District was a Level 4 district and she was a key team member raising that from Level 4 into a softer accountability level. She also has spent time as a math coach in the field, elementary in Westfield. So, she's, and she has, she's a Park Fellow and in her background, coming from that part of the state, has done some significant work with folks at UMass in terms of piloting different curriculum, different applications. So, where really, she's already made appointments, she's gotten into the buildings, we've introduced her to the coaches. So, it's really a pleasure to have her as a member of our team, K to 12 Math Curriculum Director. So, Wendy just has a few words to share with you about her background and interests.
I'm really excited to be here. Pittsburgh has been great. I've been here, this is my fourth week. I can't get over how helpful everyone's been at central office. I've met with all the coaches, as Paula says. I feel very strong about supporting coaches and collaborating with principals and supporting principals in the schools for the education piece. Yes, I was at Gil Montague for nine years and I worked in central office the last few years while the state was living with us for one of those years. And although it was a lot of work, I learned a lot, a lot about structures that really help, help support teachers in the classroom. And I'm really impressed with what's been going on in Pittsburgh for curriculum for the math department because I've been going through, there's an awful lot, I'm on a steep learning curve, but as far as the curriculum goes, the pacing guides, it seems like a lot of work has happened here to support teachers in the classroom. And that's, that's my goal, is to continue that. And just today, we were looking at, you know, a grade one pre-assessment that had, had not been done. And just, there's just so much help and everyone's pitching in and the coaches are great, highly-skilled coaches. And I'm excited because there's a lot of activities going on at night at the schools. I'm going to supermarket math tomorrow night. I'm really pumped for that. And, yeah, so, it's, it's a lot of good things. Again, I, you know, I work as a Park Fellow. This is my fourth year with the Department of Education doing that part-time. I say that and people go, oh, Park, you know, because we don't know if it's coming or not in the vote and all that. But really, what I was able to gather from the four years was a lot of training and work around the common core standards in mathematics. So, that has just been great to be able to pull apart the standards and really understand them and, and get an idea of how they will be assessed, whether it's Park or it's the Next Generation Assessment, whatever way, it's still a lot more critical thinking for the students. And how to move in that direction for teachers and support teachers in that way, I think, is very, very important because it's really a different way of learning for the students and a different way of teaching in some cases and a lot more conversation in the classroom. So, you know, I look forward to getting around to the schools even more and meeting more teachers and looking more for the trends of the school and what are the big supports that we can, you know, look at and support teachers with manipulatives and the materials. That's mostly what we've been doing here now is getting them ready for the new program and, you know, if there's some materials that they need here and there, you know, just kind of being there and hearing that and supplying that and working with coaches. But I'm very happy to be here. You know, like I say, it's just, there's so many things going on that I'm on this learning curve, but I did get a chance to meet with quite a few people and everyone has been so helpful. So, happy to be here.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for me?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, well, you'll see her back again, I'm sure, as we get deeper into the work and have her come back and do some reporting. So, thank you, Wendy.
Thank you. Nice to hear.
We're going to do quickly the Field Trip Approval Form. It's a, the Nature's Classroom. It's been before us many, many times. Fran Thomas is here to answer any questions, but it's basically the same field trip we've always done. So, do you have any questions for Fran? If not, we'll move on to other agenda items. Questions for, on Nature's Classroom?
Sorry, I saw it.
Thank you.
You've been sitting there, so you should have to.
He's wishing every meeting he went to was this easy.
Fran, when's the date? I was, I just was looking for the, there it is. This is, yeah.
Friday, April 8. Friday, April 8.
No testing or anything going on at that time?
No, no.
The window's later in the, so this is before April vacation.
All right.
Poor you.
Thank you.
You've known that all time.
Okay, good job, Fran.
I want you to go.
Then I put popcorn.
I did not have a deal with him ahead of time, either. I did not.
I will just say, it's listed on our action items as eighth grade, but it's fifth grade, so.
Fifth grade. Fifth grade. Good, thank you for catching that. When we do the, the action item, if someone can, can change that. And then, just dipping the toe in the water here, On Footsteps to Brilliance, just kind of a little bit of an update. So, I'll let Paula introduce who's here for that and lead it off.
So, just, thank you. Just a reminder, in your packet, there are two brochures, English and Spanish, that have a little bit of information. These are being distributed to parents and the daycare centers and Head Start. We have another flyer that was distributed, left at your seats tonight because the premise behind the Footsteps to Brilliance is a community-wide early literacy initiative. Footsteps to Brilliance is the vehicle, but as we get into this, there are other programs, other free resources, other ways to sort of spread the word, no pun intended, around early learning literacy. So, tonight, we have with us a few people connected to this project. Rowan Demarche, Tom Saroski, did I get that, Tom? Close enough?
Close enough.
He's, he's actually the project facilitator for the Reimagine North of Maine Initiative that's working with the most challenged neighborhood in Pittsburgh to really reinvigorate that neighborhood. And there are six pillars or focus areas in that Reimagine North project. Closing the achievement and opportunity gap in education is one of them. And so, the Footsteps to Brilliance and the Early Learning Literacy Initiative is actually nested in the Reimagine North of Maine project. So, Tom's a great partner and he's with us tonight. I'm not sure anyone from the university is.
Jay Brey was supposed to come and called right, you know, earlier this evening and said that something else came up and he couldn't be here. But usually, Jay Brey would be the representative from Pittsburgh State.
And we have a partnership with folks at the university as this rolls out to look at this potential as part of their early learning teacher preparation work. And then Kathy Brady is back with us to help at bridge and serve as a liaison between the public schools and the community. So, if the three of you would like to come up and just share a little, it's a very exciting pilot. We're taking this year to pilot, kind of really do some keen observation and collect data. But I'm not sure who would like to speak first or?
Will this debate be as lively as the last one? Tough act to follow.
It will be a tough act to follow.
So, I guess, just briefly, on Reimagine North of Maine, it's, as Paula said, a neighborhood revitalization project with the City of Pittsburgh, Twin Cities CDC, Pittsburgh State, and MOC, who I'm employed by. And it's all about bringing community together to look at old problems in a different way and trying to get different organizations at the table that have never been here before. And I know about two weeks ago, we had our first professional development session for Footsteps to Brilliance and we had people from Child Care Head Start at MOC in the same room with Pittsburgh Public Schools pre-K providers. And they're working with the same children, they're using the same curriculum, but oftentimes never really communicate. And that's one of the things we really are trying to encourage with this project is getting them in the same room and starting to build that collaborative network. And I guess the other half of it is what Paula mentioned, the community aspect. And we're really trying to layer on community supports with the Footsteps to Brilliance program. We don't want to just send in a software and just kind of wipe our hands of it and we're done, you know? Learn literacy, children. Learn literacy children, you've got a tablet. We really want to layer it on with parental support networks. So today, we spent time at Crocker Elementary with Principal Renda and his staff, thinking about ways we can work in a parent liaison from the Fitch, Fitchburg Family Resource Center to work with parents, pre-K parents, but also at-risk parents in the school, which is where the vast majority of the North of Maine students attend, and working on ways to not only use the software to promote youth literacy, but also promote stronger relationships between schools and the community and parents. And I think the software speaks for itself. We're in the pilot phase right now, so we're still testing things out, but it's super interactive, it's easy to use, it's bilingual. With literally the click of the mouse, you can change things from English to Spanish. And I think that opens up a world of opportunities for the families that we're working with to really promote strong routines outside of school, making sure they're reading with their children for the 20 to 30 minutes a day that's necessary to really promote strong literacy in youth.
Yep, our, as Tom said, our Head Start and preschool teachers got together for a training. And so right now, the Fitchburg Public School preschool teachers, along with their classroom paraprofessional, are part of that training. And the preschool teachers are coordinating together as open houses are coming up into every school. They've created some PowerPoints to really introduce the program to parents as they come to the open house here and try to get the communication out to all the parents. We just, this week, uploaded to the company all 192 students into the system. So the preschool teachers will begin to roll out the program. There is a teaching component to the program every day that the students are in the preschool program here. So we're really excited, the preschool teachers are very excited to roll it out and utilize the system.
Could I just ask before, do the preschool teachers have devices in their room?
They are, we have devices on order for them, yes.
And the, the Head Start classes just got the same tablets. So we're going to be utilizing the same tablets with the same software, so kind of going back again to that collaborative network. And they just started testing and we're kind of working out the kinks right now, but it's a really great, quick, easy-to-use tablet. And I think you guys are going to be impressed once you get going with it.
It also provides us with a wealth of data and helps us measure students, not only their listening and reading comprehension, but their increase in their vocabulary. So we're going to be able to collect large swaths of data over the course of the year with all of the children who are accessing this in the community and in our schools. And that's really exciting. We've also begun to partner with an organization called Read Aloud, whose mission it is to have every parent, every day, read to their baby from age birth to age three for 15 minutes each day. So the flyer that you have a copy of in front of you really talks about the importance, not only the importance of doing that, but how malleable the brain is and how much learning can be accomplished even before preschool occurs. And so we're talking about, with the folks at Crocker and at Central Office, creating some public service announcements that would get that information out to all of the families in the Fitchburg area and to try and give them ideas and support in following through with reading for 15 minutes each day.
Just in addition, Tom mentioned that there's this family support network and through the Resource Center, they've hired someone, his name is Marlon Perez, and you'll see him eventually, but he is a part-time person dedicated to this project and he was part of the team that met at Crocker. So there's really, I mean, I, I have to say, I've been at this job a long time and I live in this community. This is the first time I've seen this kind of really drawn collaborative interagency work around a common mission. And that common mission is to improve the outcomes for the folks in North of Maine, but really it's the folks across this community by fundamentally changing the approach to early literacy. And whether it's through Read Aloud, the Footsteps Program, public service announcements with parents, different kinds of outreach with parent, you know, face-to-face with that preschool teacher, or one of the nice things with Marlon and Tom mentioned with at-risk families, we have a lot of young teenagers who go home and they provide the daycare for their younger siblings. So these are the kinds of resources that, through changing that, those routines, the rituals, the understanding at home, whether you're the babysitter and you're the seventh grader from Long Joe, or the grandmother, or the neighborhood mom who cares for kids, this literacy message is coherent and it's from everybody. So it's, I think it's just incredibly exciting and I'm so grateful that Tom's there and we have such strong partners in MOC and the CDC in Fitchburg State. And they're even partners at City Hall, the Housing Authority. It's, it's just remarkable.
You may have said this, and I probably didn't hear it, how was it funded? Is it to a grant?
So that actually, it, this idea goes back two years ago, three years ago, when we went to the Federal Reserve.
Two years.
Two years.
Just two years ago?
Two years, just two years ago. So we had been looking at, you know, I'd heard of Footsteps to Brilliance, we had been looking at it, we had some presentations, and then we had the opportunity, Tom, you were there too when we went for the first time around?
This predated me, actually.
Oh, predated you. So we went to the Federal Reserve and threw this idea out and we got a big whopping $5,000. And then it just snowballed trying to get partners and, you know, grant money here, partner here, partner there, and then when North of Maine came along, there was some outreach there to say this could blend in. So it's really been a patchwork quilt, similar to the ones that the kids made.
Yeah, I should probably give due deference to our funders, the Federal Reserve Bank, and then the Health Foundation of Central Mass are responsible both for a portion of the subscription fee, which is supported by you guys at the public schools as well as Fitchburg State. And then the, the parent liaison, Marlon Perez, his work is supported kind of by a mix of all of those grants. So yeah, it is a mix of grant funding, but also we always like to see it matched with support from our partners because then kind of everybody has skin in the game, so to speak.
Yeah, we approve money right at the end of the year.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're better part of it. Fitchburg State has made a commitment and a contribution, so it's funded by a number of sources. And originally, when we were looking at this two years ago, we were thinking of a full-fledged rollout to the whole city. And really now, we're, we're doing a pilot with the preschools. And in so many ways, that was the right way to go. And just the kind of collaboration that it caught, it brought about within the city preschools and the community preschools. And when you think of this experience that then as kids matriculate to kindergarten, they're already coming with a common experience as they go to kindergarten.
Well, that's the question I had. So I'm just trying to understand the extent of the pilot. So there's North of Maine, which you're working with, and then there's our preschools, which we're working with. And then are we approaching the private preschools? Are we, are they, are they part of this? Or is it, I'm fine if they aren't, I'm just trying to figure out the extent of what the pilot is.
That's a great question. So for the pilot, it's restricted to a cap of 300 students, which represents roughly the Fitchburg Public Schools and the Head Start student body.
Okay, okay.
But in other cities, at a rate about 10 times what we are paying for the, the yearly cost, you can get what's time, what's called a, a community of learning or something like that, where basically if you're within the zip code, then you have access to everything. But I, we thought it would be prudent to take the first year and really try it out because it is a pretty substantial cost. And I think if we do, you know, feel like the pilot has gone well, it might be something that we, we want to explore and we've considered some avenues for funding.
But I think it's also important to remember that a lot of our preschool students that we service also attend private daycare providers throughout the city. Because they may come to us for a two-day program and then the other days, they may be in other facilities. So we are touching on some of them, but it's not, it's just in a pilot for, these are students and we are providing the program to all students that come into the Fitchburg preschool, even though not all of them live in the North of Maine. So all of our preschool students are accessing the program.
Okay.
Some of the research and data will really focus in on the North of Maine students that are living in that community.
And then just another, so they'll have the tablet access in these buildings, but, and then the message goes home that you can access this on your phone, you can access this, right? Okay. And that's part of the education process?
Yes, yes.
Yep.
And our preschool teachers are trained, as well as the Head Start teachers, on how to help them access that information.
Okay.
Okay, more to come. Well, this is the kind of thing that as it rolls out, there'll be different times where it'll be good to come back and present to you and bring you, and bring some of the partners in too and talk about the work that's happening. So thank you to all three of you and Kathy.
Thank you very much.
We knew we'd find a way to get you back, Kathy.
Always.
You can't escape.
Thank you, Tom.
So next, I want to give you a facilities update. You've gotten a little bits of shots of it here and there with emails I've sent out and postings that I've sent out. So Joe is going to come up and help me move through the slides and then also fill in the gaps here and there. So you just hit enter on each one. And I have a handout here. The handout is a little bit different than, than what is on the screen because we're constantly making changes. So basically, this is giving you a bird's eye view of what's been going on this summer in terms of facility updates.
Good evening, everyone.
Does everyone, yeah, does everyone know Joe Richardson? So Joe oversees all of our maintenance staff, works out of Central Office, and, you know, will at times during this, give you a little bit more detail of what's going on. So one of the areas that you know has been talked about through the budget season was financing the redoing of the gym floors. And, you know, given the flexibility of our budget, it was on and off the table. Luckily, as the budget ended up, it was back on the table. So the school that I absolutely wanted to start with was Long Joe, which is what we did. And this is just to give you a sense of what the Long Joe middle school floor looked like before the process began. And the white, large white mark in the floor is not sunlight. It, it's a patch. And it's one of like four, five, or six patches that were in that floor where there had been damage and the floor had been patched. And it went from this to...
Nice.
To this. It's pretty dramatic. And this, this picture here is even more up to date than any of the other ones that you've seen. And Dick, if I can call you up at this point?
Rick.
Rick, Rick, Rick Maynard. So Rick is a security para at Long Joe, is just one of the things he does, very involved with the PALS program also.
Correct, yep.
And the other person who worked on this was Dave Gordon, Officer Gordon. This, this, this is only one of the things that they've done, but after the floor was done, we were looking at the bleachers. And if you remember, I don't, can, can you go back a slide?
Oh, there's one of the bleachers here.
No, but the old ones.
The old, one more there.
So that's what the bleachers looked like. It was, again, the theme seems to be patchwork quilt tonight, but there were some that were stained, some that were damaged, some that had been painted. It looked awful. So once the floor was done, you know, we, we all were thinking, what do we do to kind of finish this off? And they had already gone down the road of, let's take that Fitchburg red and redo all of the, the bleachers. And it just looks wonderful. And then that's a close-up of it. And that was done just this weekend.
Yes, it was done.
Talk about that.
We, myself and my wife came in Friday night and Saturday night after I worked at, at either the school or the dealership, because I also work part-time at a dealership, and scraped, scraped everything down, kind of tightened up any screws that were loose that I could find, more or less just kind of did all the prep work, taped off everything. And then Sunday, Sunday morning, I started painting the bleachers. I had Dave, that's when Dave Gordon joined me for a couple, Officer Gordon, the president of Fitchburg PALS, came in and helped me out for a couple hours because he didn't want to see me painting by myself and wanted me to get home for the Pats game. So he, so we took a couple hours, well, quite a few hours this weekend.
More than a couple, I would say.
Yeah. Total start to finish, it only took me about 15 men-hours this weekend from Friday afternoon till Sunday afternoon, around the rest of my work schedule to, to take that out. As you guys know, I've been at Long Joe for, for quite a while and I spend a lot of hours coaching basketball in that court. I'm also, this winter, the winter basketball coordinator for Parks and Rec, so trying to revitalize the Biddy League program, to which, working with Craig Shalfo, we wanted to present this because with how great Long Joe is now looking, we wanted to make that a game site. So there'll be men's league basketball on Monday, Wednesday, there'll be the Biddy League program games on Tuesday, Thursday. I mean, yeah, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday night, PALS will have practice in there, which will be the only night that PALS, that practice will be in there, followed by Sunday, Sundays, pretty much all day Sunday, PALS will have all their games there. So we will have roughly 25 other cities that play in that league that PALS plays in that will be coming to see Long Joe. And I just, I went to Craig and I said, hey, this patchwork, I don't mind putting in the volunteer hours, the patchwork bleachers, we got to make a change. And he said, what do you propose? And I said, let's paint them, let's paint them.
And I think, is this the five-gallon bucket of paint that was found behind the, because I was talking to the custodian and Mary, is it Mary?
Yep.
Mary and Mary. And I said, well, you know, we've got to match the paint to the, the red that's on the floor. And she was cleaning out behind the, the stage and found a fresh five-gallon can of paint. And she said, we've looked at it, it's the same color, so that's...
Interestingly, interestingly enough, where it's not touching the floor, it is a shade different. The, I had talked to the gentleman that were doing, that was doing the floor, because I have an account up at Sherman Williams, up at Twin City, and I was going to go out and buy the paint myself, and he gave me the color, which is actually raisin torte.
Of course.
So we...
I love that.
So I, I was all ready to go up there and, and Mary came to me and said, Rick, you're, you're crazy, it's going to take you about five, you know, five, six gallons of paint and you're paying for that yourself, along with all the materials to do everything. So she basically saved me a couple hundred dollars when she found this five-gallon bucket of classic, you know, of just a classic...
Raisin torte.
Yeah, raisin torte, yep.
That's what it is from now on.
That's what we'll call it, raisin torte.
So, so that was great. And really, this is just one of the things, Richard, I can't say how many times I go there and, you know, we're pointing out something that's been done or fixed up or beautified and I, and I find out that it's Richard and, and folks from PALS and other people putting in volunteer time. So we really appreciate it. I went in, after the floor was done, before you painted, one of the nets was, was torn.
I fixed that yesterday as well.
And I said, you know what? I don't want to see any torn nets. Let's buy a box of nets and when they rip, or they're torn or whatever, you put them up and you fix it, especially now, it looks so nice.
Right. And, and John Rashudi, who, the chairman of the Parks and Rec, is, is a fanatic, as some of you may know about basketball nets throughout the city. So I had talked to him and one of the, the nets that I put up yesterday was also, in addition to the, the other nets, is going to be donated to Long Joe as a game site from the Parks and Rec. So I've got those coming in as well to replace all of them brand new.
So it's, this is a facility, not just as you heard, for this, for our students, but it's for the whole community. And it really is great.
So Dan, I... Just real quick, the patchwork that you saw was PALS and Richard. They came up after we had a leak last year and said, Joe, we can handle this, just give me the time and access to the building and we'll do it. And I came in the next week and it was done. So that saved us quite a bit.
On the far end, where you can see the scaffolding there, two years prior when we worked with Fitchburg State, when, when Andre was painting, while Andre was painting in the auditorium, I had actually cut out a, almost a 30 by 30 section of the floor that was damaged in a previous leak, sanded that polyurethane, that made it look temporary, as a temporary fix, made it... Sanded that polyurethane, made it look temporary, as a temporary fix, made it look, you know, good so we could do games. Then this past incident, it actually was worse than the other ones where it actually created like a speed bump, like speed bumps. So, our kids literally during gym class, we had to put cones there and have them run around the cones and created obstacle courses over these speed bumps. So, I turned around and again, offered to Joe, hey, if you don't mind, I'll come in one afternoon. I've already got the bunker wood left over from the previous patch job. So, I don't know that I really liked the fact that he took a picture of my handiwork, but as a temporary, but it really does show what we had to do, the steps we had to go through too.
Rick, I'll make you feel old. I played on that court in nineteen fifty-four, Fitchburg High School.
And it was probably the same exact court prior to this refinish.
Well, it looked, it looked pretty good back then. But you mentioned Sherman Williams. My nephew is National Vice President of Sherman Williams, and he's a graduate of Fitchburg High School. And we probably could get paid from him.
Yeah. Well, I almost...
Andy, it's been interesting, Pete, because when I posted this, and you might have seen some of the postings, people saying, oh, it's the Brickyard. I played there, I played there, you know? And you really, you know, get interest in that. So, again, thanks, Richard, and thank you, Rich, everybody else that's done this work. I know you've already, I've kept you towards the end, so don't feel like you need to stay as we move through the rest of it.
Lisa's actually heard me as three separate names. Is that correct? Because she gets confused because people will come to, come to and say, hey, Rick did this. And somebody will say, oh, Eric did this. And so, yes.
I'm going to call you Mr. Fix-It or something.
Yeah. So, Eric or Rick, if you see those, that's me.
That'll work, okay.
Well, Rick, can I just say, thank you. I mean, I haven't met you before. And it's nice to meet you. I mean, that's incredible work.
I've grown to be pretty handy. Over, I've been fifteen years, I've been with the, with the school system as a para. I started as a security para here at the new Fitchburg High when it first opened its doors. And I've been, you know, at Long Joe. So, I've played many hats with that, but, you know, yeah, I've become pretty handy over facade work and stuff like that. So, I'd like to be able to get it back to the school.
Also with the kids, they know you, they respect you. You play a really important role at that school.
Thank you.
So, thank you. All right, so let's keep going. So, this was a room at Long Joe. And it was in the days when carpeting was king. And the best way to put down carpeting was cemented to the floor. So, this summer, one of the projects was to get this carpet off the floor. Our custodial staff began working on it. They got the carpet off. This was supposed to be tiled. And then, in talking with you, and they said, you know, there's hardwood floor under here. So, can we work on the hardwood floor? The answer was yes, and?
Oh, wow.
That's what it looks like now. So, just, you know, a very happy teacher returned to their classroom. And what you see in the quality of the work of this building, that you can bring it back. The two-tone is no longer there. It's all the light color. We've covered up all of the yellow that's been repainted.
The room has been repainted. The carpet was really a task because it was glued straight to the hardwood with padding underneath. So, it took quite an effort to remove it and then to follow up with sanding. Quite a few passes to get everything out and then refinish it.
We're also working on the ceiling of the Brickyard. You know, I had worked with some material in another job that I had. I've shared that with Joe, he's looking at it. Some of those tiles that are missing, or warped, or damaged. I think that we can find some materials to at least to replace the ones that are missing. So, hopefully, no one will look up. You're really taking up with the game. But if you do look up, you want it to look presentable. Keep going. So, this probably, you know, again, you're all going to say, yeah, I went to class there. This is the old home ec room at Long Joe. Most of the pipes had already all been disconnected. The drains were all clogged. The gas pipes were no longer connected. So, this was a very large room that had a lot of potential that was basically, oh, the floor had been damaged in many places. Some areas of the floor had been covered with wood. Others had been... Others had been cemented. There had been cement put on some of them. So, this was a big job. And then, we started working on it.
Yeah, we had a number of tasks with this room, you know, as a home economics room. It had electrical service that came out to the middle of the room. It had plumbing service that came through the floor. Leaks and issues over the year has resulted in the patchwork on the floor to get at services underneath. So, it took us, it took us a week of just looking at it to figure out what to do and how to tackle this. But it came, it came together nicely. There's another angle.
Before, this was what the wall looked like on one section.
That's just from different things, you know, the table that was there, as you can see, hitting against it, some water damage and just age.
This is the beginning of the work of repairing the plaster work. And then, the subfloor was not salvageable. You know, there was no way you could put a surface over the patchwork of materials that had been used on the... So, again, it's your staff and you that said, you know what? We've got to put three-quarter ply down here. We have to start from scratch. So, that's what they did.
So, we removed all the surfaces in the middle of the room, as you can see. And then, we grinded down the floor and removed everything that we could to level it as best we could before we laid a completely new subfloor. And then, we tiled it with VCT. The room also has been painted since. And we removed some cabinetry from the back. But to walk in there today, you would never know what was there prior. I mean, there's no services to get to the floor. There's nothing.
Life Science Lab.
This is where the Life Science Lab is doing, going, the new Life Science Lab. Okay? So, the other part, so that was the construction. But this summer, lots and lots of broken furniture, you know, broken chairs, broken desks were removed and disposed of. And on the top floor, which is the fifth grade wing, we put all brand-new furniture. We purchased all new furniture, new tables and new chairs. I have photos of those later, which you don't even know about. I stuck those in before coming tonight. And then, on the fourth floor, we received truckloads of used furniture from Fitchburg State University. Fabulous tables and chairs and all kinds of furniture that they were removing, but from our use, was still in really great condition and good use. So, all of that, and getting this all ready for the rooms of thirty teachers' rooms had to be moved. We were Thursday or Friday before the opening of school. The new furniture had just arrived. It needed to be assembled. I called Ray Cosenza and asked if the football team could come and help to just do, you know, open boxes, take the plastic covers off desk chair legs, do the kinds of things that would move it along quickly so that the custodial staff could do the cleaning, and then move the tables in and all of that. I think twenty players from the football team came and spent a few hours on Friday to do that. So, a lot of this work was happening the weekend before school opened.
Yeah, the last, the two weeks before school is when this all seemed really to come together because that's when all our stuff arrived. And, you know, when we got to the point where a football team came in to help out, we had already emptied the top floors. We had delivered new furniture up. And we were, you know, I had custodians coming from all over the district to help. And they all pitched in and they all did their part. But they were getting tired, you know? And the football team came in and kind of saved the day by doing those tasks that really we could get done without, you know, us having to do it, opening the boxes and get stuff out so people could get together and just put it together and get it into the room as it needed to be. So...
And then, this is while the custodial staff is also having to wax their floors and do all the regular maintenance that needs to be done before the opening of school. So, this is, this is the top floor. This is a photo of the new furniture. So, all of the fifth grade classrooms have all of these new desks and tables. And it was actually, we asked the school, what do you want? This is the mode of furniture that Long Joe likes. It's these trapezoidal tables. It allows for a lot of different configurations. So, that whole floor has all new tables and chairs.
Wow.
So, some of the other work around the district, want to talk about this stuff, Joe?
So, this is Room 200 up at Fitchburg High School. And that was chosen to be used as a STEM room. And when we first encountered it, it was used as a computer lab. So, what they would like is for us to remove, remove the computers and the tables and such. And my feedback on it was, you know, if you're going to use this as a science room, carpet is not the thing to have in here. So, the carpet was old, it was worn. So, we took that out and laid, you know, took out all the glue. We had to grind it all down. And we installed the VCT tile again. And there's new arrangements proceeding to use this glass as intended. And we also have the gym floor at Fitchburg High School. It was in good shape, but it was worn. And so, this is the new floor that we have at Fitchburg High School. As you see, the end painting has been changed a bit. And the crest in the middle has been updated. The lines have been updated. It was, and it was all sanded down and refinished.
It's just beautiful. It really is beautiful. Yeah, didn't have the Fitchburg and Red Raiders is at the other end, right? Yeah, so that's new. We added that.
At South Street, we had some requests to remove carpet in rooms. And in the main building, where Central Office is, as many of you know, that used to be a convent. So, as we pulled the carpet, we didn't really know what to expect underneath. And what we found was, you know, where old walls were, there's floor leveler. So, our first hope was to be able to, much like we did at Long Joe, was to pull the carpet, sand the floor, and give a beautiful new hardwood floor. But here, we encountered a lot of floor leveler, construction repairs that took place during the conversion of the building. So, we did the best we, you know, with what we had. And we installed a new subfloor there, again, in VCT tile.
And then, one of my pet peeves is not just the outside, but the inside, but the outside. The approach to a school has, says a lot about what the values are inside the school. So, this is just the front office, but we've purchased flowers and mulch and everything for all of our schools. In some places, like at Long Joe, some new urns to go right outside the door. And if you've traveled up and down in the elevator at Central Office, that's been totally stripped and repainted. And the brass is still waiting to be done. That'll be the next step, is to polish the brass, replace bulbs that are burnt. Speaking of bulbs, it was also at Long Joe, the custodiumary kept saying, we keep replacing the bulbs in the scoreboards and they keep burning out. So, we brought in an electrician. The electrician looked at it. Well, the bulbs that were being replaced were not the right voltage. So, we've now found a vendor to replace them all with LED lights. So, again, it's that conversation of getting different people to talk to one another. And so, that something just doesn't go on for ten years, but somebody speaks up and says, the bulbs keep burning on the scoreboard. Hmm, why would that be? And then, following it up, so now, you know, we'll be going to full LED and the scoreboard will hopefully score always in the favor of Fitchburg teams. Both of them, right, the two.
Been operating on one scoreboard for about five years now. We'll have both.
So, now, both scoreboards will be working. That's right here in the front. Still looking at that. Eventually, a lot of times, shrubs were put there and they don't really serve a purpose. And we're finding more and more that less is better. So, eventually, we might be removing more shrubs and just having lawn that's easier to take care of and to do. But right now, if you remember, that was grown up and looked kind of like a jungle. And I don't remember who did this. Was it Paul?
Paul Walsh dedicated numerous hours to reshaping and cutting back it. It really needed, it needed some attention. And we were able to get it there this summer.
So, that's actually not installed, although it looks like it is, but they're being manufactured as we speak. So, and I don't have an ETA on that, but two, three weeks, maybe more, they've been going for.
I don't have a firm ETA, but I know it is, it is being manufactured.
It's actually being made.
And it'll be, it'll be a reality.
So, this is a mock-up of what the sign will look like in front of Goodrich. We're basically repeating the design that's at Fitchburg High School with the two brick pillars. The next slide is what the sign will look like at Fitchburg High School. And then, my goal is that over time, I want to replace all the signs to all of our schools with this electronic version of the sign so that it's a kind of a same, you know, same kind of signage at all of our schools. And allows all the schools to put up up-to-the-minute invitations, announcements, and things like that. Also, at Long Joe, if you've been in there, there are green blinds, green metal blinds, that most of them won't go up or won't go down, or they're half up and they're half down. So, we've removed all of them on the one side of the fourth floor. And the new ones, which are going to be white, more modern blinds, are coming in Friday. I saw an email today. With the goal being that we would move back and forth and work our way down, you know, and replace the blinds there with something, you know, that's useful, that works, and is more contemporary. But that alone, I want to say, one wall, one side of one floor is around nine thousand dollars.
I believe, I believe it was seven, seven thousand.
Seven to nine thousand dollars. So, these are things you've been approving out of school choice funds.
Backside will be cheaper, probably. Not as many windows.
Well, the windows are the same size, so...
Well, there are fewer windows.
Fewer windows.
Because there were sixteen, right, sixteen windows, I think.
There was, I believe, a hundred and twelve on the whole, one whole floor that I count. So, we're doing half of, half of that.
And then, I don't know if there were more slides, so then, just...
So, you know, as I put here, you know, the thanks to, many of these projects were done in-house, aside from the large, you know, gym floors. And I, it really couldn't happen without the men and women of the maintenance department, from the tradespeople down to the custodians, senior custodians and junior custodians. They work every day to give us clean schools and a great place for people to come and people to learn. And so, you know, I couldn't come up here and take any of the credit except for just giving them the guidance and the materials they needed. They did the work. They made it happen. So, really, a good thanks goes to them.
And I have to thank Joe, does a great job. I drive him totally crazy. He hates when I'm going out into the school district because he knows there'll probably be a photo arriving at some point about something or other.
And that was not great when I started.
But he's gotten used to it. He's gotten used to it. But he's just great to work with. And, you know, has really, you know, done the lion's share of just managing all of it.
Had a complaint, though. Where's the mirror in the elevator?
In your pocket. It's called BYOM, Bring Your Own Mirror. I've heard that from a number of people.
I used to go in the elevator and do a little this and this, you know?
Are all the schools fully staffed at this point?
We were down two custodians over the summer due to, mainly to a promotion. And we are, someone started today. And there'll be someone starting next week. So, we'll be fully staffed by next week.
Because I've noticed, I see custodians I'm used to seeing in one building. I'll show up in another building and they're there and I just...
Well, typically, if that happens, because most custodians stay at the building that they're assigned to. But they will cover if someone takes vacation, someone calls out, because I can't go with, with, down a person overnight because of what happens when you walk in the next day.
Absolutely. I just wanted to make sure they're not getting all worked up.
Usually, it's the senior custodians who work during the day at the schools are the ones that are free to take that added shift at night. So, they'll leave their school that they've worked at all day and go to another school and cover for a fellow custodian who may have been ill the day or needed to take some time off. So, sometimes you'll see that change, but it's not due to a lack of personnel.
Okay. Well, I'm glad the new hires are in too. That's good.
I beg for a great presentation.
I beg for a great presentation. Absolutely wonderful, and so illustrative of just the, you know, the importance of this work. I look at all of that, and I just think, oh, you know, the kids on the gymnasium, like, they'll notice. For them to see their school being taken care of sends such a great message. My question has to do with moving custodial staff around within a building. Are we moving staff around so that people are on a different floor, so that they might learn different wings of the building? So we've got people, maybe the juniors, they start off on one level, and then they switch over to another, just so they can learn everything and really get familiar with the building? Is that happening as a policy or a practice?
The short answer is no. And I meet with the senior custodians every month. We have a senior meeting. And I take input from them. And when I first arrived, there were some schools, like here at Memorial, that did it. And there were others that didn't. And I listened to, you know, all sides to kind of arrive at, I allow the senior custodian to run their ship, to run their building. And I try to charge them with, "It's your building. I come in, and I try to give you what you need, but you need to run your building." And that falls down to their people also. Some seniors felt it's a good practice, and I do believe it's a good practice. But where they had challenges was, as teachers get to know the custodian and become familiar with the custodian on their route, they feel comfortable going to that person. So in some schools, there were challenges with changing it around every six months. Where on one side, it's great that a custodian gets to learn the whole building, which my belief is, whether this is your route or not, you should still learn the entire building. Because if an emergency happens, you may not be in this part of the building. You may have to go to that part of the building. So I let the seniors drive that, and some of them still rotate, which, like I said, I believe is a great practice. And some of them choose to stay the same, like South Street. South Street, the custodians have a route that they stick with. And the bonus part of that is, they get to address the small things that they may not get to if they change that route six months later. That they can set a schedule that says, "Hey, every two weeks, every three weeks, I'm going to dust this stairwell, or I'm going to dress this." Where if you're constantly moving them, they're always trying to learn, what are those small things that they need to catch up on? So it really is a case-by-case basis, based on the school and what I have for feedback from the seniors.
We've made improvements with contracts. It used to be a route, and that was a bid. So somebody would bid that route, which they considered easier to do, you know, so.
Now it's the school.
Now it's the school.
And that's what I've told people, when they want to move, you're moving the school. You're not going and taking, you know, this route at that school. Because we need to be flexible. And everyone needs to know everyone else's job within that school. So if the seniors out for any reason, there's someone ready to take their place. And the other thing I've asked all the seniors is to train your people to take your job. And that's how, what I've always brought from the Navy, is that your job is to train the people under you, so when you step out, they're ready to step in. So if something happens, someone's always there. And they've done a good job at that also.
And there's a plus size to the maintaining the routes, too, because in terms of accountability, if different people are doing the routes all the time, and something's not looking right, or that wing starts to look, you know, what belongs to everybody belongs to nobody. So there's potential that if that's your wing, and that's what you do all the time, you own everything about it. If it's spotless, you own it. If it's not, you own it, and you know who to go to. But I'm glad, you know, working with the head custodians, take feedback from them for what works the best, but.
Okay, thank you.
All set? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job. So Jeremy, if you want to come up and talk about the Fitchburg High graduation date, I don't, can't remember whether we touched on this at an earlier meeting, but because of a number of potential scheduling issues, we looked at moving, having the graduation later. And we've had conversations since then, and it appears that it would be better to change that. So Jeremy's here to talk about that.
Absolutely. Thanks very much, too, for allowing me to do so. I made some copies of draft. I should have put proposed with June 3rd on there. Never assume. So the June 10th graduation date also affects Goodrich Academy, as they graduate the day before we do traditionally. You know, because it saves money on sound system rentals and so forth. And they would then do theirs on June 9th, which I know, I don't want to speak for Mr. Penn and the team over there, but we have spoken together, and I know that's a concern of theirs, is being very late for their school. So in looking at June 10th, the current calendar has June 13th as the last day of school, which, I mean, you know, the reality is, there may be some snow. It does sometimes happen in New England. And so that's a possibility. But as of now, it's June 13th. And if we had graduation on June 10th, literally the next school day would be the last day of school. Usually, we look forward to at least a week to two weeks after graduation, to really focus on final exams, scheduling topics that we need to deal with with grades nine through 11, and just ultimately wrap up of the school year. So we would be doing all of that. If we have a very light winter, which it does happen, that has happened before, then we would be doing all of those things, like underclassmen awards and final exams for underclassmen, the same week that we were doing all the graduation rehearsal activities, which would be chaotic. I mean, I know there's concern about the June First and Second MCAS, but we've dealt with that June, early June MCAS issue before. And the issue is, that affects a smaller number of teachers, especially where we have freshman teams now with the tech engineering and the bio. We pretty much have that covered, whereas if we're doing underclassmen exams the same time we're doing rehearsal, that's the whole school. And we need teachers down there helping us with graduation rehearsal and the different activities. So the other factor is that the Department of Ed regulation and requirements is that you can scale back to 168 days for the senior class. And really, if you look at this calendar that I have here, you know, we would have final exams right up to the 169th day on the 27th for seniors. So we do have a different schedule this year with the seven drop two. So it's gonna, we're gonna spread the exams out probably over four days, really, but we're going right up to the 169th. And then, we don't let them go. You know, we have the seniors come immediately back to school for the next four days. And we do a lot of different activities with them. You can see that graduation week for us is a lot of practice and preparation, because, you know, you have to sing that alma motto with some gusto and learn it. But also, they do a lot of other things, too. And you can see some of the different activities that, these are sort of traditional activities. This 150th graduating class may put a spin on some things, but traditionally, that's what we would be doing with them. So we're basically with them the entire time that following week. And like I said, if we have to push it out, first of all, we just lose the seniors for a week, which we don't like to do either. Because even during this timeframe, last couple of years, we probably had eight to 10 students continuing on with Play-Doh courses to make sure that they finish up and that they were able to graduate on time, because, you know, they might have missed a piece here or there. So as I said, you know, I think for us, and it would be Goodrich, too, that would bump back a week, it would work a heck of a lot better to stick with what has been traditionally just graduation at Fitchburg High School, that first Friday in June. And any questions, I'm glad to take them.
Yeah, so we're bringing that for your consideration. Jeremy's here to answer any questions. And should that be something that you agree with, then it would come back on your next agenda as an action item. This is really talking about putting it back to pretty much what it was more like. But when we were making the calendar.
Yeah, and that was my fault.
There were still a lot of unknowns in terms of testing and the dates that the testings would go to, and we were afraid to have it bump up against the testing. But now, we know with more accuracy what's going on, and this would be a better schedule.
Sounds to me.
All right, so we'll bring it, Marisa?
And I just want to add something else into our graduation. At one time, at the graduation, when they were announcing the students, they used to tell you what the student was doing. Now, what they do is they only acknowledge a handful, which I don't really care for, because there's a lot of kids who worked hard, that should be acknowledged. And I'd like to see that come back. Since we're on the graduation, I don't know if that's something we can bring up for discussion on the next meeting?
We can certainly talk about that further. I know there was some concerns about it, too, when it was all of them. But it's worth discussing, no question about it. I understand the point, and we've already strategized around some ways to shorten up some of the periods there that we do as part of the graduation that extend.
You know, that, you know, really fidelity would be a good thing, because a lot of kids will not win awards. A lot, the most kids won't win awards. But they should get some kind of acknowledgement for sticking with us, for their whole schooling.
Well, you know, yeah.
I think what I'd like to do, if you have, you know, those ideas, I think those are all great ideas, but I think it should go to the school community to discuss it within the context of what they deal with every day. Because it's different when you play it out in the context of parents and families. And sometimes, it's not fidelity. You know, it's not a lack of fidelity, why people aren't here. It's conditions of their household. It's other things that happened. It's that they had to move and go to another state and then come back. So, you know, it's not as clear as defining. I think all of those things are good suggestions, but my recommendation would be to send them to Jeremy, and then let him, you know, look at them with his staff. I don't, Paul and I were just talking, and I don't think we actually do identify what school and whether they're in the workforce or not in the program.
I think it's been the last, maybe, two years.
Right.
There were a few years prior that it was. But as I said, it becomes very inaccurate, you know, even to the.
Whenever the program's printed.
Even to the example that I gave where, of reading, I do the gold F part, that's kind of my part in the graduation ceremony. And I've had students kind of, is it, yeah, so-and-so, and they're going to Fitchburg State, and they come up, "I'm actually going to Worcester State," or, you know, so.
Or you could just acknowledge going on to.
Well, two days ago, it was Fitchburg State, yeah.
I think what your point is, is valid. I think you have a valid point. So what I would say is, let's take the valid point and hand it back to the school, and have them discuss the best way to do that.
I would definitely like to do that. And I would probably approach it this way, discuss it with the faculty, the School Improvement Council, which is the, you know, composition of students, parents, faculty. And I would even bring it to our advisory for senior classes. You know, this is their graduation, too. It's ours, but it's theirs. It's the school's, but it's theirs, and it's the 150th as well. And they're already talking about it, you know, as a class. So I think it's good to get some feedback and ideas about how to make it the best that it can possibly be, and fair-minded, but positive, and all of that.
We have a lot, you know, we recognize a lot of students, you know, that don't show up at graduation, you know, with the Alumni Association, with all the students that we recognize, and the senior award banquets.
For sure.
And then the one thing, like they hold at the Old Mill for the Gear Up. And, I mean, there's a lot of recognition going on.
I think what Marisa's point is, is that those are individual recognition opportunities, and it's not when the whole community comes together. So maybe there's a way to bring all that together somehow, you know. And, I mean, we post this, I post this stuff everywhere, all the time, on FPS First, on the website, you know, the Gear Up folks. But not everybody goes to that. So I think one thing we can keep, you know, we can have a conversation about is, how do we gather all of that and bring it into one place so people can see what our kids are accomplishing?
We still need to sell our school system. And we still need to show that our kids are going to outstanding universities. And I think that's very important, that we do that.
No, it's true.
Yeah, it's.
Can I just ask, since you're here, do the kids like their new square, engine sway, the Cordeo project?
Oh, yeah. I mean, the feedback about that, you know, just similar to some of the projects that have gone on. And we've had a couple of big ones at the high school over the summer with the court and the, and the science lab. But that, I think, has universally been received super positively from everybody who's seen it, or, you know, had the opportunity even just to see pictures of it. And, you know, again, class of 66, from soup to nuts, came in, and they did everything. I mean, John Cordeo, and Steve De Pace, and a number of other guys, hands and knees in 100-degree weather. I looked out one day from my office, because I can see it perfectly from my office. It was mid-July, or whenever it was, and, you know, they just, they, it was certainly sweat equity and a labor of love for those guys. So, yeah, that was, it's impressive what the graduating classes of Fitchburg High School do. I can tell you that we'll be meeting with, I think it's a class of 51, on Thursday. We have a senior reception of the faculty, but I want to say it's 15 to 20 members from that class are coming down at 4:00. And I'm meeting with them, with some student representatives from the senior class. So it's gonna be, it's just amazing, this happens every year, and it shows that through line to our students. But I think it's also great for a class of 51 member to see, you know, these are students from the class of 2016. And, you know, that's what, you share that in common. And, you know, it's, that's one of the great parts of being at Fitchburg High, the history and the tradition and the pride that just never goes away.
Class of 51, they were an outstanding class. Wonderful athletes. They beat Lemus the 12th to nothing.
Look at that. Like it happened yesterday. I'm picking that up in the presentation that I do.
Institutional memory.
They just had some wonderful, but class of 66 will be our featured class at the Alumni Association General Meeting.
Oh, great.
Steve De Pace will be representing the class. And they're expecting a great turnout for that meeting.
Yeah, I won't be surprised by that. You know, if this, if the patio is any indication.
So before Jeremy leaves, we're going to be talking about budget stuff, but there are a couple of budget items that relate to Jeremy. So I've been tracking the attendance from mid-August until now, and I presented some of this in a more specific, detailed way at the resource subcommittee meeting, and now I'm just going to give it more as a cursory way. But right now, we, for the first time since many, many years, we're over 5,300 students in the school district. So that's, there was a time, not many years ago, we were bordering on 5,000. So we're up as a district by about 300, and I want to say at the high school, you're up around 85 or so?
Yeah, in 9 through 12. I mean, we have some additional grades, too, with pre-K and then the.
But just the 9 through 12, about 85 students. So I've been in conversation with Jeremy since school started, to just keep my finger on the pulse of class size, enrollment, and all of that. So we've looked at the data, and there's a lot of data that we're not able to provide the level of program that we want to provide in all classes. So the first thing I did to address that was, say, hire two PERS. And the PERS are working, are pulling students out in particular periods, one to work with remedial students, and the other to work with students who are in AP courses. So what it's doing is giving those students a legitimate class, because these are classrooms, classes that are in other school districts, including, you know, the school districts both Jeremy and I have been in. So that's relieving some of the pressure from some of the classes that had large class size. We still have, in my view, too many classes that are too large. So Jeremy and his staff have been looking at the schedule, and in conversations, we've determined that we could use, the high school could use another two FTEs to be used to address this issue of an unexpected boost of students, of about 85 students. So at this point, as you would well know, scheduling that in a high school is not easy. We added a kindergarten, find a room, find the furniture, add a kindergarten. Well, at a high school, the way that the pockets are, are all over the place. So what I'm planning to do is give Jeremy and his staff a lot of flexibility to identify where are those areas that they need those additional FTEs. So what you're going to be hearing about in Bob's more complete presentation is other things that need. is other things that need to be done right now that have a financial impact. So the, the component for Jeremy are the two Paris and two additional FTEs at the high school to help address class size. And I think that, and then there's another component that's at the high school, but it's not related to class size, it's related to a grant where there's the need... We have a technology teacher at the high school who has been funded out of the Perkins Grant. And due to reduction in the Perkins Grant, we need another $27,000 to, to meet that need. So those are the two things that are specifically high school oriented. So if you have any questions about that while Jeremy is here, to just ask about those pieces.
Which action items are you talking about?
This is going to be on...
It's not on tonight.
Oh, it's not on tonight? Oh, okay, so you're gonna present it tonight?
No.
And talk about it?
We're, we're bringing this to the committee's attention tonight and to announce the plan once we find out what's our net school spending, additional allocation.
But we presented what we presented to the Resource Subcommittee in terms of this and in terms of these additional costs are being brought to the school committee tonight. So these would be brought to school committee tonight along with the high school piece. For, for an action, for a future action.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so those are the, so first of all, let's just look at the school pieces. Any questions about the high school or those school pieces?
Well, so those are all for par positions?
No, two Paris and two FTEs.
Okay. Might be classroom teachers, might not be classroom teachers?
It will be classroom teachers.
Okay, all right, so, okay.
We have, you know, we've seen, as Andre said, I mean, we've, we've seen a big increase in enrollment. It's over 1,200, 1,220 is what it's been, grades nine through 12. It's 1,270, four, five, changed by the day. But that's adding pre-K, which I don't factor into this situation. So the, the resulting issue is that we've just seen a lot of increase in our, in our class sizes. I mean, the comparison data from last year to this year is significant. And even last year, we had seen an increase in enrollment from the previous year. So it's been a sort of steady three or four or five years where we've just gotten to the point where it's a good problem to have, you know. I think as we look at our enrollment data and the transfers in and the, and the registrations, we're seeing, you know, a lot of interest in the schools and in Pittsburgh High School and from other schools outside of even our, our, you know, three middle schools, which again, I think expresses confidence in the Pittsburgh Public Schools in general. So we would, we would need to look around, you know, we have class sizes that are large. And so we would look to alleviate those so that students and teachers can be in the best situations that they can be to, to do all the things that they need to do, which is, as we know, a lot.
So does the state catch up to the increased enrollment next year? I know we checked this out, October 1st, whatever year.
October 1st. So, so this enrollment, if this hangs in there in terms of this, you know, it's 5,312 as of 5:00 today. If that hangs in there, then whatever increase there is from last year at this time to now will be additional Chapter 78 for next year.
Yeah, I think that's a great use of the money.
Right now, I mean, these numbers are barely budging for the last two weeks. So I'm not expecting a big shift. And our kindergarten is a little bit lower than what we figured it was gonna be, around 435 to 450. It's around 420 right now. So the good, really good news is, you've added a kindergarten in order to address a smaller class size. If it was 435 or 450, it's closer to 420. So now our kindergartens, instead of being around 27 or 28 per classroom, are 21 or 22.
Right.
So what, what you wanted to accomplish, you accomplished.
Could we see that, like maybe at the student support meeting, like what the kindergarten class sizes are?
Yep.
I wanted to add, Jeremy, all of this, thank you for all you're doing. Because I was meeting voters not long ago and I knocked on the door of a guy who said he was a realtor and he just sold a house to a family. And it was like up, you know, up in one of the more, you know, rustic parts of Pittsburgh. But the family had purchased this house specifically so their child could attend our high school.
That's great.
It was phenomenal.
It was nice.
And I would never have known this had I not sort of randomly met this person. But I wanted to pass that along. And I, I'm sure that that family is not unique and that this, this is a great trend. We're on a great wave. This is a really interesting wave. But thank you for all you're doing to, you know, to make that wave as high as it is.
Well, I can tell you that...
And all your teachers.
It's not me, it's the, the staff. Three years ago, set an enrollment goal of 1,200, of 1,200. Because we knew at 1029, that is not, that's not where we needed to be as a, as a healthy high school in a city of 40,000 people. So, I mean, it's been a group effort. And, and a lot of that has to do with working with the middle schools very closely too. So, I mean, a group effort district-wide. And, and I think setting the tangible goal has been exciting for the Pittsburgh High staff specifically, because they've been able to see it increasing year by year to the point where it's been 1,220 up to, you know...
It's 1,275 today.
Yeah, and that, but that...
But that, there are preschoolers in there.
Yeah, but 1,229 through 12, which is really, oh, I think positive, then bring on 1,300 then, you know? Of 1,300.
Tonight.
Yeah, I, I came a little bit late, but, yeah.
And there's just a great atmosphere, you know. I'm in there quite a bit, we're all in there. And when you walk in there, when you see what's going on, I mean, it's really good work happening and the students are engaged.
Yep.
So any other questions for Jeremy?
No, I'm just... You wanna move tonight on the teachers?
No, I, I don't think we need to move on anything. I'm just informing you right now and there's no agenda item. And I want to bring that to you in the context of these additional costs, all right? So if, so we're all, we're good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to add, as the next school committee meeting, we'll have a better idea exactly what we'll be allocating towards net school spending. So it'll probably happen around the same week.
Thanks, Paul. Have a good night.
Thank you.
So just to bring everyone up to date, these were things we shared with the Resource Subcommittee. So I'm just gonna share these with you tonight. So another area that we've looked at is substitute teachers. We were on the low end of what we pay our substitute teachers. Very difficult to get good substitute teachers and to keep them. There are different kinds of subs. There's a regular, everyday rotating sub that you bring in when someone calls and they're out. Then two years ago, we went to building subs. So each, each school is, is a portion, a certain number of building subs. They work for them, they're there every day, they get to know, and this was, this came out of the administrators asking for this. So these subs get to know the school, they get to know the kids in all the classrooms, they get to know the teachers, and they're the building sub. And then there's a long-term sub. The long-term sub is the person who comes in for, you know, maternity leave and covers somebody for six weeks or two months or something like that. Now, those folks come in and they have to, you know, prepare lessons, correct papers, make assignments, very different role. We were paying that person 85, 75. 75.
After 21 days.
So before 21 days, 65, and then 75 to after 21 days. So to get somebody, and you want somebody with a bachelor's, you want somebody who's gonna do more than just, you know, be there. So we looked around and the going rate for that was 120. So I've made an administrative decision to look at all of these rates to be competitive. So we've raised our regular rate, because we've done this so many, 75 to 75. Our, our building sub is, what did, what did we end up with?
Our regular rate stays the same at 65.
At 65, the building sub...
75.
75. And the long-term sub is 120. That's the person who's in there really doing the role of the teacher. So to do that for the whole year for all of our schools is $72,000. Then the Long Joe ELT grant, as you know, the grant is going down. And in order to maintain the services at Long Joe like we're doing it now, there's been a $30,000 reduction there. So in order to maintain everything that we're doing, that's another $30,000. And then in our CPR review, one of the issues that has come up over and over again has been translation. Translation of handbooks, accessibility and availability to translation for parents, and especially in special education, the ability to translate IEPs, which are not Google Docs that you can put through a Google Translate, because they're very complex. So we've looked at sending this work out to be done and it's 40,000 per handbook?
40,000 per handbook in one language.
In one language, 40,000 per handbook. We have three distinct handbooks at elementary, middle school and high school, plus all of the translation that needs to be done. So I'm recommending, and we have the opportunity to hire a full-time Pittsburgh Public School translator who would do all the translating of all of our documents, but also be available throughout the school system to go and do one-on-one translation, group translation. And it's being driven by the Coordinated Program Review, but it's the right thing to do anyway. So that's a resource.
For Spanish?
For Spanish. So then I, I mentioned the Balance of the Technology Grant for 27,000 that we needed to match. The two parents at the high school would be 35. Two classroom teachers at the high school would be 100. And then there's also a grant that has been covering a portion of Pam Rivers's salary, who is the coordinator of our school nurses. You have seen bits and pieces of the value that Pam offers to the school district. We have a full-time certified nurse at all of our schools. So whatever it is that comes down the road in terms of medical issues, in terms of education or any of those things, we have a staff of nursing care that can provide that. And in order to maintain that and keep that up to date and keep that well-trained and keep it informed, we have a nurse leader. And Pam, not only is a nurse leader here in Pittsburgh statewide, she's, I receive feedback all the time from people across the state who are more at a state level of, thank you for sharing Pam with us, Pam went to this, she, you know, what you're doing in Pittsburgh is great. So her grant that's been funding her, and the goal of the grant was that over time we would take this on, would be $25,000 this year. So as we are looking at the potential of additional funding through net school spending, these would be the items that we would be looking at right out of the gate. So we brought this to the Resource Subcommittee last week. I'm bringing it to you now in a more open meeting to share these things with you. And then as we move forward with more discussion with the city in terms of net school spending, these would be areas that we would need to fund in order to maintain the programs and the work that we're doing.
Well, Long Joe substitutes, do we pay them more?
Yes.
A percentage.
Percentage that's same as teachers would get like a...
Because their day is longer, yeah.
So because the net school spending number, would this be then built into the budget going forward for 27,000 as well so that this is a sustainable?
So if there was an additional allocation of net school spending, like last year when the additional was 300 was allocated, that now became part of the regular budget and then moved forward the following year.
So we're not spending one-time money on...
That's right.
Plus the Chapter 70 money would be greater.
Well, yeah.
Right.
So I know that's a lot. I don't know if there are any questions about any of that. Will, as we move closer, Bob will send you more, more detail and backup to that. But they're pretty crisp and clean in terms of what they are. Some of them are just grant shortfalls, which we have every year that we have to make up that... You know, luckily, I think you were saying tonight you saw the Title I grant was approved and that did not have a reduction, right?
That's correct. Correct, it had an increase.
No, no reduction for Title I, that was an increase. And Paul has been working on some of the new guidelines in terms of how that money that needs to be allocated to the schools. But in these other grants, there has been a decrease. And we either have to reduce the program, eliminate the program, or compensate, you know, make up for that, backfill that.
Think if I could, one of the challenges with the grants is that we were actually notified of the grant applications and then the grant awards well into the summer. Usually we get that information shortly after the state establishes its budget. That, I, I'm not sure if it was be, I don't know what the reason was, but it was the beginning of August before we heard about some of the grants and we had a two-to-three week turnaround time. But it was well after the time we would have had to notify staff of staffing changes or layoffs or any of that. So it's very difficult. I've just got approval of the Title I grant today. And we have a short, a small carryover to fund the salaries for September. But we usually do the, get all the Title I grant business in by the first week of August. So it's very late.
Any questions on any of that part of it? All right, so I'll just run through the donations. And the first one is for Rhinegold, from Martha Clark, BJ's, a doctor's school donation of a value of $650. For Rhinegold Elementary, picture books and chapter books for Rhinegold Book Swap, $500. For Rhinegold Elementary, funding source Peter Hart. For two wooden organizers, one for lost and found and the other for office microwave and refrigerator, $375. From Kathy Brady, for Rhinegold Elementary, a cash donation for the sole purpose of buying white bead board for the Rhinegold office, $500. For DonorsChoose.org, for South Street Elementary School, $133. And it would be used to purchase Scholastic News for first-grade students to improve comprehension of nonfiction text. Also from South Street for John Thompson, donated by, again, Donors Choose, $390.65 for Lego for STEM education. From Joann Fabrics for McKay Element, from McKay Arts Academy. Donated items include art supplies, garden supplies, home decorations and crafts for $1,500. And the funding source is Joann Fabrics. And then for grants, we are asking you to submit the Quality Full Day Kindergarten Grant and asking you to accept the Extended Learning Time Grant. The kindergarten grant was for $180,490. The kindergarten, the Extended Learning Time Grant is $633,865. 21st Century Learning Center, $165.69. Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Grant, $97,800. McKinney Vento, $30,000 academic support, $22.8. Promoting Adolescent Health and School Success, $4,500. And Fuel Up To Play, $3,747. So those last ones are to accept and the full-day kindergarten one is to submit.
That 21st Century one is 165,000?
Yes.
Yes.
And that's a combination of both schools.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, action item. First action item, to approve sending Pete Stevens as our delegate to the next conference.
Second.
And it should be 2015. There's just a couple typos in here.
Yes.
The motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Next one, this is Sally Crankin as the alternate delegate.
Make a motion?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. The next one is fifth grade at Memorial to nature's classroom, field trip.
Make a motion?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
I'll make a motion that we take 587 through 593, all of the donations.
Second donations, motion made.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes, 594.
All right, I'm sorry, but I have a question on this. Is this appropriate to ask on this one?
Yes.
I have to just say, I, I don't feel like I can vote on this. I don't really, I know that you've talked a lot about the baseball program and the backstop, but I, I didn't see this figure of 25,000 before. And I don't know if anybody wanted to talk about that, but, but I, I, I have some concerns because that's a lot of money and, so...
So here's what's going on with the baseball. So the baseball backstop, which is that large chain link fence behind the home plate... So the baseball backstop, which is that large chain link fence behind the home plate, two of the pipes that hold up the whole thing have become detached from the ground. So I think there were five maybe across the back, and, and two of those have rusted and become detached from the ground, so they're no longer supporting, and that's, that's the section that's very high, and then it goes off and tapers off to the sides. The others are not in great shape. So we'd have to get it fixed. It needs to be fixed for safety reasons. At the same time, the way it was built is the backstop is right up against the bank. There's a dirt mound bank right behind it. So there have never been spectators on the other side, near the other dugout, because the only way to get to the other dugout unless you're a baseball player is you've gotta walk through the woods and get around to the other side. So as we were looking at it in terms of safety, it seemed to make sense to do, to do two things. One is if it's, needs to be repaired anyway, because two of the pipes have become unattached from the ground that are supporting this, to take the opportunity to move it forward about eight feet. So we would move the whole backstop forward eight feet, which now creates an eight-foot walkway, which is the norm in most baseball fields you go to, so that spectators now could go to the other side where you'd put some seating and could sit behind the dugouts of their team and, you know, really create more of an atmosphere where people are there and a part of the game. So either way, for safety reasons, that backstop needed to be repaired, because it's, it's, it's in the stages of deterioration. And this is an estimate that we've gotten, you know, from a company that does this kind of work.
I'll make a motion, we accept five ninety-four.
Motion made. Second and seconded, any more questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Twenty-five thousand dollars for school choice sped materials.
What motion was done on sped?
Motion made a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Next one is for grant submissions.
Motion? Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes, then accepting a lot of grants. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Pay three hundred eighteen thousand dollars worth of dead bills.
Dead bills?
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, there's no executive session, is in the two drunk?
There's a second.
All in favor, aye.
Return to you now. Is there anything in my computer you need or...
No.